The August 26, 2025 meeting of the Richmond Sanitary District Board of Commissioners is called to order. The first item of business is the approval of board minutes of 7:22 of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for approval of board minutes from July 22, 2025, as presented.
And I will second the motion. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both opposed. Any opposed? The minutes have been approved as presented. The next item of business is approval of invoices from check dates July 18 and 25 and August 8 and 15 of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for approval of invoices from check dates July 18 and 25, 2025, along with August 8 and August 15 of 2025. The total amount was $380,461.30. Notables included two from Keystone Cooperative Incorporated in the amounts of $23,269.10, There was Richmond Hydraulic Services for $14,113.47. Cooley Contracting for $11,271.98. InfoSense Incorporated for $10,892.12. Richmond Power &amp; Light for $46,837.61. And two from Simorelli General Contractors. One was in the amount of $19,638. And finally, $14,379.85.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve invoices from check dates July 8 and 25 and August 8 and 15 of 2025 totaling $380,461.30. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the Director's Report.
Yes, Madam President and Board. You have both the June and July monthly report before you. On the overall, everything is really tracking as I would expect it to track. There are some notes in there, like under landfill, under the June, that Rumke has purchased a landfill in Henry County. We kind of talked about that in the budget meeting. But other than that, I don't really have anything of specific note unless there are questions.
They all seem to be pretty consistent month to month.
Yeah, for the most part. I mean, you can see, we talked a couple of times where there was the month, I think, of March or April where the revenue side, you know, had to do with not what we received, but that the way the paperwork goes to the finance office and gets put in. So there was a delay in where that showed up. But you can see in these couple of months, we're back tracking more normally on revenue. And we saw the heavy month of April or May, whatever that was. But everything else seems to be tracking like we would expect it to be.
Okay. Anything else to report?
No, we do plan to get with you sooner. Invoice Cloud, kind of, we've been rolling out that other aspect to the public. And we are going to kind of be pulling metrics and give kind of a report on that software at a little bit later date. We don't have enough months quite yet to really have a good picture yet, but that'll be a piece that's coming soon.
Okay. Thank you. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve wastewater residuals disposal permit, R-AZSS 2025, 26, 27, 28, for Arts Septic Services LLC.
President?
Go ahead.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to approve the wastewater residual disposal permit as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's been a motion and a second to approve the wastewater residuals disposal permit as presented. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve wastewater residuals disposal permit, R-DM-2025 and 26, for Drain Man Inc., expiring 6/1 of 2028.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to approve the wastewater residuals disposal permit as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's been a motion and a second to approve the wastewater residuals disposal permit as presented. Any further questions or comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to enter into an agreement for the emergency purchase of new CCTV equipment.
Yes, Madam President, Board Member. And actually, this is a purchase of a new.
I was going to say, I don't remember reading that.
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay. Yes. It's the truck.
Yes, the truck. Back on May 16th this year, this board approved the purchase of a new CCTV equipment and software for our new, for our sewer maintenance department. The purchase of this equipment was from Brown Equipment of Evansville, Indiana. Our plan was to retrofit this equipment into our current 2012 Ford F-450 box truck. Our truck, because it had low mileage, and we thought it was the best way to go forward. But our truck was driven by us to Rochester, Indiana, where Rapid View LLC iBOC camera equipment is located, well and right route. The truck died and was not, I was notified by my sewer maintenance manager, and so I had to tow to Rochester Ford to troubleshoot the problem. Rochester Ford ran into several, ran several diagnostics on it. In the end, they found metal in the oil pan. Rochester called me. I asked them to remove the oil filter and cut it open, which they did find an abundance of metal and oil shavings. They sent me pictures. I did go and inspect the findings myself. And the engine had a catastrophic failure. It spun the crank and rod bearings. The engine, at that point, needed to be replaced. While inspecting the truck, they also found antifreeze in the transmission, so that meant the oil cooler had failed, which generally means the transmission would need to be rebuilt. I asked Rochester Ford for estimate of repairs. The engine replacement and the transmission flush would be a minimum of $24,436.97. That was the estimate. If the transmission did need to be rebuilt, the estimate was $6,500, and this did not include any hard parts, like gear shafts or cylinders. At this point, we were easily over the $30,000 mark. At this point, I do not think it's wise to put this kind of money into a 2012 F-450. I started looking at the cost of what it would take to replace the truck. We have a quote from, actually, Brown Equipment for $79,957. It discusses with our very passionate sewer maintenance manager, Brian Smith, and sewer maintenance manager, Jason Berry. And we all agree that it would be more cost effective to replace this truck. So at this time, I, and I did talk to purchasing director, Karen No, and law department to see if we could, if I could ask the board for an emergency approval purchase of a new 2026 E-450 chassis with a 14-foot cargo box built out to house our new Rapid View iBOC camera system. I was told that we could do this emergency purchase. I'm looking at a new quote for a new 2026 E-450 gas chassis with a 14-foot cargo box with upgrades. Available at this time that I could find is a premium safety light package, power retractable rear canopy, and auxiliary work space heater, plus a heater underneath the desk. The cost of this truck is $79,957. We have the board with the emergency purchase from Brown Equipment of Evansville, Indiana. We have funds.
Thank you. I do remember that being that part. So basically, the truck is with Brown, and Brown will then go ahead and do everything that we need, including, will they do the retrofitting otherwise for the CCTV as originally planned?
Yes. Yeah, into the new vehicle. There's no extra cost for that, because I hadn't started on doing any of that work.
Okay. And then it'll come up here for us.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So are we responsible or liable for the truck that's left at the dealership, or?
I, when I stopped in, I did talk to Larry, their service manager, and he was going to talk to his boss. I asked about, you know, would you guys want to buy the truck as a trade-in or, you know? So they haven't got back with me on that yet. If they do, I do. I was going to get back with law to see if, you know, how I can do this. I will have to come back to the board to deem it as, I don't know what they did, if they say, you know, yes, we can sell it to them, or whatever next steps would be. If not, we do have auction here in town. I'll have it towed back here. We'll probably place it in an auction, or try to sell it outright, maybe see what we can get. Or we'll try to get any money out of it that we can. Because I know the trucks without the engine is still worth a decent amount of money.
Okay. How soon can we get the truck? Is it still?
This, it's on the ground. It's there. I looked at it. It's so they can move forward with the whole project, and we would hope to have it back. I mean, they're talking maybe, I said, October, November by the latest.
Okay. Thank you. We'll entertain a motion if there are no further questions or comments.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to enter into agreement for the emergency purchase of a new CCTV equipment truck.
Okay.
And do we need to amend the agenda as well?
Amen.
The agenda, since it says CCTV equipment.
Yes, yes, yeah, we said, I would put it in for the truck rather than for the CCTV equipment that we already have.
Okay.
Right.
Yep. So I'll maintain that recommendation and turn to agreement for emergency purchase of a new CCTV truck as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the agreement, the emergency purchase of a new CCTV truck as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve a budget transfer.
Yes, Madam President and Board Member. It takes the board's authority to sign in consideration to finance to transfer money between department fund categories. As we have discussed several times, repair costs and repaired parts are at an all-time high, with being at the end, with this being at the end of the year, Senator District accounts are depleted and will be depleted by the end of the year. Each department has funds that are not being used. They will cover these costs by transferring into the necessary accounts. I'm asking the board to approve account number 2221-0503-5054490, an amount of $760, into the account number 221-0503-2022410, which again would be the $760. The other transfer would be account number 6201-0505-5054490, $3,040, into account number 6201-0505-2022410, $3,400, or $3,040.
And I want to make a quick note to Jeff's piece, that the Finance Department, at the end of last year, in their review of capital items, have kind of, you saw in the budget proposal where I moved some things, particularly in the lab, reduced it and moved it to the service. They're kind of being more, let's get to the definition of capital. And a lot of times, we had supplies, and some of these are supplies, but they're really putting a $5,000 threshold. So if you're buying things that are below $5,000, they would rather you spend them out of these 2410 accounts than out of the $4,000 accounts, which are capital accounts. So some of this, we had budgeted in $4,000s for the exact same things. We budgeted them there because it's just some of the history that there've been, you know, it may be like I'm buying a bunch of repair parts, and overall, it's over $5,000, but I'm buying them blanketly in smaller batches, and they would prefer that to be in 2410. So some of this is just in due process and housekeeping of what's defined as capital. It's not necessarily that we've exceeded necessarily the budget and the others. It's just we're unable to use what we had item and earmarked in the $4,000 accounts in the way that we had them planned.
And sometimes, since there's been an actual resolution, is that when it's outs across two different funds? Because we're just looking at accounts within a department.
Yes, but the last four digits, or the.
Correct. If it was, if it was a resolution, like moving funds from 6201 to 2221, or it would require a resolution. If it is just a $4,000 account to a $2,000 account in these instances within the same fund, it just takes a motion like this. If it happens to be going from a, in the same fund, but in the same, so if it's capital to a capital account, then Jeff or I have the ability to sign it. If it's, like I said, if it's just in the same fund, but outside of the normal brackets of personnel or supplies or services, if it moves there, requires board signature. If it's fund to fund, then it requires a resolution.
Okay. And you said for us to, something, is there an actual form that we need to sign?
Yes.
Okay. And both of us need to sign it?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure for the motion, sometimes we say one authorized, one doesn't sign.
It's the same form Jeff and I were signing if we were moving like $4,000 to $4,000. It's just it requires a board signature on the bottom instead of my signature.
Just a single signature.
It can be. We've done it both ways in the past. I don't know that it's outlined.
Okay. So if you just want to make the motion for me to sign, it's fine. If it's just me.
Okay.
If that's how they drew it up, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to approve the budget transfers as presented, with President Sue Miller being as the assigned signee.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the budget transfers, authoring myself to sign those on behalf of the board. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to award the quote for cleaning services for the billing office.
Yes, Madam President, Board Member. I'm presenting this for Denise Johnson. The cleaning quotes for the, cleaning quotes for the new building, billing building were sent out to three companies, and we only received an interest from one. Elite Clean came in, toured the building, reviewed the specifications for the cleaning. They have submitted a quote for $125 per week, coming in twice a week, and then $25 per hour for any extra services outside the attached cleaning specifications. I have personally, Denise has been personally cleaning the building since we moved in and filled twice a week for about two to three hours each time. Should work. Denise's recommendation to award this quote to Elite Clean of Richmond, Indiana, they were the most, they were the lowest and the most responsive and responsible bidder. Elite is used by the city of Richmond, that city building at this time.
And I have one question. I think when we were going through the budget, did you say that the admin building does not use a cleaning service?
Correct.
Okay. I thought at one time.
It used to.
Okay.
We did away with that, and we internally cleaned. For most of the other buildings, it is internally cleaned and/or some of that funds, or a lot of those funds, went to use to the creation of two PM operator positions, and they do some, quite a bit of cleaning as well and top of their other duties. So we kind of shifted it to, to get more hours and more accomplished. But the way this comes, particularly with the public, the public facing office and doing it after hours, because again, we don't want to be doing that while the public's there, just kind of change that demand when we clear that building.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to award quote for cleaning services at the billing office as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to award the quote for cleaning services at the billing office as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business, the recommendation to award the bid for construction of the wastewater treatment plant levy upgrades project.
Yes, Madam President and Board. If you remember, we received bids at our last board meeting for this levy upgrade project. The project as a whole really started back in 2017, when we hired Christopher Burke Engineering to come in, do an evaluation of the levy around the treatment plant, make recommendations from that, as we wanted to bring it up to the level at which it could be certified, to be able to protect the asset we have in the treatment plant. So that process, along with the permitting associated with the design of the upgrades, and finally, the bidding, has come to the point where we did receive two bids at the last meeting. Ourselves and Christopher Burke Engineering reviewed those and found Brumball Construction Incorporated of Arcana, Ohio, to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So it's our recommendation to award a contract to Brumball Construction Incorporated to complete the wastewater treatment plant levy improvement project for a total contract price of $1,598,728. Of that, we were awarded a $750,000 OKRA grant. And so with that grant, along with the monies that we budgeted for this project and saved for this project, we have all that we need to pay for it.
During this process, how do we, I mean, I can understand, you know, we have a current levy, and I assume in some fashion, we are enhancing it, strengthening it. How do we keep during that process, whatever, the dirt, the soil, whatever, we're bringing in from the river, are we coming?
So the majority of the upgrades are on the north end of the current levy, which is really not exactly right beside the river.
Okay.
Kind of, the levy goes along the river and then cuts back along the top edge of the treatment plant. But all the appropriate measures will be in place, erosion control measures and things like that, to protect the river during construction.
And I did notice that we had a letter from Christopher Burke, because there was a significant difference between those two bids, like this one was 25% less comfortable.
There was, and I did get some feedback from Phineman just on that. I think this was newer type work for them, and so I think they were just conservative in putting their numbers together, so.
Okay. No? Any other questions or comments, or a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to award bid for construction of the wastewater treatment plant levy upgrades project as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to award the bid for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant levy upgrades project as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve change order number two to contract 53-2023 with Sinisus for the Short Creek Lift Station.
Yes, Madam President and Board. This adjusts some quantities for the project, along with accounting for some things that came up during the project, just on the site, some major things. We had a change to how we were tying into the gravity sewer there at the lift station, some additional concrete work. We had to change how we were protecting the hillside right beside the, beside the new station and the building. It's pretty steep, and it's, it's basically, the building was right at the top of the hill at the river's edge. So we had some flex mat protection on that hillside, and then changed some things up with how RP&amp;L wanted to access the transformer for the station. And so we added a separate drive to be able to provide access to them for that. So the net change for this change order is a decrease of $47,274.46, taking the total contract price to $6,26,825.54. So a total change order percentage for the project as a whole, less than 1%, which is really good, at 0.92%. We are adding some additional days, 32 substantial completion days, and then 348 final completion days. We've just had some things that they've had to work through on the final side. I mean, the station's been operating since, I think, last December or so, but working through some bugs, and so we haven't fully closed out the project and considered it warranty work. We just extended the days on that since the station is operational, and they've been diligent to continue through that. So it's our recommendation to approve that change order here.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to approve change order number two to contract 53-2023 with Sinisus for Short Creek Lift Station as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's been a motion and a second to approve change order number two to contract 53-2023 with Sinisus for the Short Creek Lift Station as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is to approve the letter of engagement with Ice Miller for the bond counsel.
Yes, Madam President and Board. As you know, we've been working through a sewer upgrade project for capacity of the Midwest Industrial Park. Part of that, part of the financing for that will be to sell bonds anticipated through the SRF pool funding program. And so this is an engagement letter for bond counsel with Ice Miller, specifically Lisa Lee is the one we're dealing with, which is who we've dealt with on all previous bond issuances in the recent past. So it's my recommendation to approve this and give you authority to sign on the board's behalf.
And obviously, this would only come into play should the, you know, the counsel approve.
Correct.
The steps that need to be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to approve the letter of engagement with Ice Miller for bond counsel as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve a letter of engagement with Ice Miller for bond counsel as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is miscellaneous. Is there anything else to be brought before the board today? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I will turn to President Bakshi for the Stormwater Board.
Thank you. So I'd like to call it to order the August 26, 2025 Richmond Sanitary District Stormwater Management Board meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of board minutes from July 22, 2025.
President Bakshi, I would like to make a motion to approve minutes from the July 22, 2025 meeting as presented.
I will second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. The next item on the agenda is approval of invoices from check dates July 18 and 25, along with August 8 and 15 of 2025.
And President Bakshi, I would like to make a motion to approve invoices from check dates July 18 and 25 and August 8 and 15 of 2025 totaling $26,458.25, with a significant invoice being. totaling $26,458.25, with a significant invoice being Cooley Contract LLC for $11,271.99.
I will second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Take on to miscellaneous. Is there anything for miscellaneous? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.